The light will see and the devil will hear And the dead will live again The Lord will be, the God will speak The praises of the Lord Did you know that your baby boy is a wonderful man? Did you know that your baby boy will one day prove the nations need to know? That your baby boy is heaven's purging land? Thank all of y'all for coming. Thank you. Roll tide. Now just a minute, since we got all this snow, Santa Claus is supposedly gonna come down from behind the chimney somewhere here. He's gonna be coming down real soon, so I think he's gonna be coming out from right up there, if I'm not mistaken. So let's wait and see if he comes out. But anyway, thank all y'all for coming out on this beautiful Thursday night. Wait a minute, there he is, it's Santa Claus!
Merry Christmas! Okay, here's you!
Well, here he comes. Now I got any special requests, now's the time to get him in. Come on down, Santa, we waiting on you. Here he comes, the man of the hour. On December 1st in downtown Athens. And he knows everybody.
Hey, Jamie!
Hey, so how you doing? You got me anything for Christmas?
Jamie, you know you gotta be a good boy to get something for Christmas.
Well, at least you know that. Hey, Daddy, who is that? Huh?
He wasn't sweet, Daddy, when he was at your place.
Yeah, go ahead.
Merry Christmas, everybody. How's Limestone County doing? Y'all can do better than that. I said Merry Christmas! I hope everybody's been really good this year. Some of you still have time. I want you to keep working on it. I want you to have a great time. I'm so happy to be here at this parade, this Christmas parade and this tree lighting today. Athens, Limestone County's one of my favorite places in the whole wide world. And I love the snow. Wow! That's amazing. And I can't wait to hear more from them. Merry Christmas, everybody!
Thank you, Santa. Yeah, goodies. Oh yeah, pass it out. Yeah.
Oh, I get to pass them out. You want one?
Steven, you gonna do one more for us? Alright, Steven's got to sing one more song while Santa passes out a bunch of goodies. Again, thank all of y'all for coming out tonight. Here is Steven to do his thing. Did y'all go sing it just a little bit, okay?
He is the bluebird, here to stay. He is the new bird. He sings a love song as we go along, walking in winter wonderland. In the land we can build a snowman and pretend that he is farce and proud. We'll try lots of merry, we'll say no man, but you can do the job when you're in town. Later on, we'll conspire as we dream by the fire to face some afraid. Plans that we made, walking in a winter wonderland. In the land we can build a snowman and pretend that he's a circus clown. We'll have lots of fun with this turn snowman till all the other kiddies knock him down. Later on, we'll conspire as we dream by the fire to face some afraid. Plans that we made, oh, we're walking in a winter wonderland.
If only Mike Blakey could sing like that. Alright, again, thank y'all for coming, but first and foremost, for the next couple of songs, y'all gonna do about three, aren't you? Are y'all ready? You're not getting cold yet on me, are you? You what? Can all of y'all holler Merry Christmas to start with? Go!
Merry Christmas!
This is the Blue Springs Elementary School Choir. They're gonna kick off this big tree lighting here on the courthouse square. Are y'all ready? It's y'all's time!
Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus, right down Santa Claus Lane. Big big red dog is crazy, pulling on the reins. Bells are ringing, children singing, all is merry and bright. And your stockings say your prayers, 'cause Santa Claus comes tonight. Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus, right down Santa Claus Lane. These are bad guys filled with toys, where the boys and girls again. Here's a sleigh bell jingle jangle on a beautiful stride. Kind of big band cover up your head, 'cause Santa Claus comes tonight. Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus, right down Santa Claus Lane. He doesn't care if we're rich or poor, he loves you just the same. There's no doubt, we're all children, that makes everything right. Things are hard today, Christmas here, 'cause Santa Claus comes tonight. Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus, right down Santa Claus Lane. Big big red dog is crazy, pulling on the reins. Bells are ringing, children singing, all is merry and bright. And your stockings say your prayers, 'cause Santa Claus comes tonight. Bells are ringing, children singing, all is merry and bright. And your stockings say your prayers, 'cause Santa Claus comes tonight. Up on the housecar reindeer park, out just good old Santa Claus. Down through the chimney with lots of toys, all for the little ones, Christmas joy. Ho, 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 who wouldn't go? Ho, 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 who wouldn't go? Up on the housecar, click, 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 down through the chimney with a safety.
That was wonderful. Did y'all like that? Everyone will be smart then, right? Okay. We're gonna wait, the snow's gonna get so deep out here in a minute, we ain't gonna be able to walk around. Thank y'all all for coming. Right now, though, we're gonna take time out to go to Mr. Bill Perkins at Central Church of Christ. He's gonna lead us in a prayer. And I told him to make it kinda long, because we needed to get dark before we light the tree. You know how preachers are, so... Here's Mr. Bill Perkins.
I'm gonna pray till it gets dark, so y'all just bear with me, please. Let's pray together. Dear God and Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful and glorious day. Father, we thank you that we woke up this morning in a free country, living in peace with plenty of everything that we need. We're thankful for our beautiful community of Athens and Limestone County, and just the joy of what it is to be a citizen here in a small town where everyone knows everyone, and to have special events like these. And Father, we come together tonight to light this Christmas tree to kick off our holiday celebrations. And again, we're thankful to live in a community where we can do things like this and call upon your name. Father, we thank you, as we light this tree, we're reminded that you sent your own son, the light of the world, to live among us. And Father, help us to be a light in a dark world and to make a difference everywhere that we go. Father, bless those of our community tonight who are hurting and sick, who cannot enjoy this season. Father, may we be your hands and feet to serve them and make their lives better. Dear God, we love you, bless our community, bless this event tonight. And Father, bless our country with peace and unity. In Jesus' name, amen.
It ain't dark yet. Alright, we gonna go to the kids again, let them sing a couple more songs. Is that alright with you, Mr. Steven? We gonna go ahead and do them now. Is that alright with y'all? Really? Is it? Huh? Y'all ready? warmed up, let him get ready over there, would be good to go. Boy, Santa Claus, he don't really want, does he? Y'all ready? Let me put the mic down. Here we go! Blue Springs Elementary School Choir doing a fantastic job.
You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. He's making a list, he's checking it twice, you gotta find out who's naughty or nice. Santa Claus is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping, he knows when you're awake. He knows if you've been bad or good, so he's got goodness sake. You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. He's making a list, he's checking it twice, you gotta find out who's naughty or nice. Santa Claus is coming to town. Two kids in girl's toilet, we'll have a new relief. They're gonna build a toilet down around the Christmas tree. You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming, Santa Claus is coming, Santa Claus is coming to town. Walking around the Christmas...
Is that it? Think I got one more? Is that it? One more? No, one?
Not now.
Not now? Well, they gonna save it till the end, okay. I just wanna make sure I got everything. I just hope this snow don't mess my hair up out here tonight. Alright, what we need everybody to do is kinda gather to the front of the tree that's facing the street. Mr. Bill Matthews office over that way. Go over here, all of you. Everybody get over that way. All I'm saying, let's hear today, Santa Claus is here amongst us. Some thank you, Jim, for his wonderful job. They'll sing again here in just a little bit. What we're gonna do next...
I have a list.
Christmas tree ornament contest, we're gonna have that down. I have a lot of others. Before we do that, tell us. Mr. Ray Davis, First National Bank is gonna come up here and say a few words about Christmas and give us all his words and wisdom. That will be a present. My dear friend, Mr. Ray Davis, the First National Bank.
Thank you, Jamie. Merry Christmas, everybody. Got a beautiful evening tonight, and I'm looking for Gina. She's... I can't move that. We have been, had the opportunity to get involved with the schools and... You're not gonna do a Steve Harvey, are you? But we just wanna thank everybody and all the students and the schools that participated in this. It's a wonderful event, a wonderful time of year, and we just happy to be a part of it. And that's about all I have to say. I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas, and we have some checks for the schools and all, turn it back over to Jamie.
First of all, I got a good best t-shirt out here today.
You're not gonna get electrocuted, are you?
No, not at all.
You sure?
I promise.
Stay out of the, stay away from the snow. Alright, First National Bank sponsors this. Here's the winner.
Winner.
Winner, two, one and two. Julia Newman Elementary School. Hey, hey! Anybody here from Julia Newman? All prizes not taken will be given to the host of this program. You're asking me? We mayor take care of. Cedar Hill Elementary. Congratulations! Any extra money, you got the money, right? Alright, now we're gonna go to the high school. We got one winner of the high school. I see Tom Sis got his hand out over there, so I'm guessing he's gonna... Elphwood High School!
Hey!
Thank you.
Thank you. Private school, Athens Bible School. And now we're gonna have some remarks from our local dignitaries. And that's using the word loosely. The first one's getting to be here is Sheriff Mike Blakely. But I talked to Mike Disaster there, and he will be unable to attend. He is not riding a horse, he just doesn't feel all that good. He don't mean to be out of the way. So that leads me to the next big dog in charge, Mayor Ronnie Marks, great city of Athens.
Hey, good evening, everybody. What a wonderful community we got. And I don't believe I can say anything that's any better by any means than what Bill Perkins did with his prayer with this community, with kicking off a great community, with Mark and the commissioners, and then about to open the courthouse, which is a wonderful facility downtown. Our new city hall, God has blessed us, and we need to be aware of what this is all about in this season. So thank you for being here, all the boys and girls, and for Santa Claus being here. We appreciate you very much.
And Mayor, from a personal standpoint, you are doing such a wonderful job here in this great city of Athens. We just wanna say thank you for what you've done, Ronnie. Y'all know the courthouse. Who you think is gonna be in the courthouse?
We're gonna, we're starting to be December 16th.
When we'll be open to the public?
It'll be open January the 3rd, when we come back from this...
Let everybody get a look at it. Now, let's give some remarks from our Limestone County Chairman, my friend, Mr. Mark Yarborough.
Thank y'all so much for coming out. This is our third annual event right here at Christmas. I wanna say a special thank you to Dr. Sis and all the schools' participation, also Dr. Holliday. I wanna say a special thank you to First National Bank for sponsoring this, and being our sponsor with all our prize money for our decorations. Thank Mr. Karen Middleton, been here above and Christmas. Thanks Santa Claus for coming. I'd like to recognize my commissioner, District 1 Commissioner Stanley Hill, District 3 Commissioner Steve Turner, District 3 Commissioner Jason Black, and District 4 Commissioner Ben Harrison. They're all here. I seen Stanley and Ben, and I seen the others. This is, uh, we are so blessed to live where we are. And how about the Blue Springs Elementary?
Oh, yeah, wasn't that great? Absolutely.
This is as good as it gets. And we got snow on the square. We are courthouse in the roof. We're gonna light this square up, we're gonna light this tree up, and then we're gonna have a fantastic Christmas parade. Thank y'all, and special thanks to my friend, Jamie Gordon, too. And if they come and do this, they take time on the list to, but they're scheduled to come and do this for us.
Like I'm real busy this time.
And we appreciate it. Thank you.
Usually I didn't tell you about this, but I did. Thank you, Mark, and did a great job at the courthouse. Not a better place to live on earth than right here in Athens, Alabama. We're getting about ready to do the countdown now. And don't forget, we do the Christmas parade tonight. You'll be able to see it on ZTV. It'll be run about 20 times exclusively. Give us about a week to put it together, but you'll see all of this and that. So be sure to watch the morning show, too, and you'll see a lot of that. We're about ready to start the countdown. Is that about right? Are we dark enough to see the tree now, Mr. Mayor? Are we ready? I need all y'all to count down with me.
Santa, get in here.
I'm gonna start it. Five. Y'all ready? Five, four, three, two, one! Hey, again, thank you, everybody, for coming out. We got three more singles. One or two more singles songs right over here. We're gonna have that for you right now. Again, Merry Christmas from all of us. Thank all of y'all for coming. Enjoy the parade. Start the scene. I got nothing else to say. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Ronnie. Thank you, Santa. Let's get back over here. Y'all ready? Gotta give that a shout out. Alright, before we conclude tonight, come on, Manny. Steven Young is gonna bless us with one more song. Make sure we get that break. This is an old Taligan deputy sheriff I believe I've ever seen. Steven, you ready? Alright. Thank y'all for coming. Y'all enjoy the parade. I'm not gonna sing, but he is. Let's give Steven a big round of applause for setting all this up. Thank you, Steven. Merry Christmas.
Holy, holy night, the stars are brightly shining. It is the light of our dear Savior's birth. Long fade away in the silver of hinden. Till the light and the soul finds its worth. A truly long, the weary world rejoices for yonder breaks. A new and glorious morning. Oh, please, oh, please, angel voices, oh night, divine. When Christ rose from the water, oh night, divine. Oh, night, oh, you. Through the gospel of love on another, his law is love and his gospel is new. Pain shall he break, for the slave is our brother. And in his name all oppression shall cease. Sweet hymns of joy in grateful chorus raise. That all within us makes his holy name. Christ is the Lord. Oh, praise his name forever. He is high and glory evermore proclaimed. Oh night, divine.